2019, and I'm going to ask that our distinguished vice chair lead everyone in the pledge of allegiance. Will you rise, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. We're going to proceed with recognitions. I'm going to ask Mr. Mike Barber if he would lead us in these wonderful recognitions by the school district. Thank you, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, and Superintendent Saunders. As you know, we're back to school, and this is always, you know, an exciting time for the school district. And we've all been busy getting school underway, so it's nice to be here tonight. And we do have two special recognitions. So the first one is a gratitude award. I'm going to ask Mary Glass, the president of the Manatee Education Foundation, to stand up here. So, Mary Glass, president of the Manatee Education Foundation, is a community advocate and hero. She quietly goes about her business, supporting all the children of Manatee County with numerous initiatives, and she always finds ways to fulfill requests of the district to better serve our children. The Early Learning Community Task Force comprises a group of community agencies, Early Learning Coalition, Step Up Sun Coast, and the School District of Manatee County, and I believe others. And that typically compete with one another for funding and children. Mary was an early supporter and advocate for this group, and her guidance helped this group collaborate in a way that benefits all children, regardless of which agency they belong to. And without the foundation's funding and support, the task force could not have become a model for the state of Florida. Mary is also on the front lines of advocating and getting funding to support programs that align and support the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading. This includes the SOAR-N4 program, in which all pre-kindergarten children and their families who live in Title I zones are invited to family evenings to gain important educational support and encouragement during the summer and once a month during the school year. The district has seen an increase in the scores of children who regularly attend those evenings. Mary and the Manatee Education Foundation do much more than serve the school district. They serve the children of Manatee County, supporting early learning steam and providing $100,000 for teacher grants. Mary is also currently involved in supporting students in post-secondary capacities, working with Moat Marine and the possibility of transporting students to their new facilities, and many other proactive ideas and initiatives. She is a valued and longstanding member of our community, and she changes the lives of children in Manatee County. So for all of that, we have a gratitude award for the president of the Manatee Education Foundation, Mary Glass.
Good.
Parents, parents, Eddie, parents.
Thank you, Mary.
Because school just started yesterday, we didn't have time to put together any student celebrations, although I'm sure there'll be plenty to celebrate by the time we get together next time. But we do have another presentation for some people who make a difference in the lives of our students. So if I could have the Ross Camps come forward.
Let's have Sandy.
This is Steve and Carolyn Ross Camp. And again, I'm going to have to read this information. Earlier this summer, Florida Education Commissioner Richard Corcoran recognized business leaders from each Florida school district who provide ongoing support of students. For the school district of Manatee County, Commissioner Corcoran recognized Steve and Carolyn Ross Camp of Freedom Senior Management. The Ross Camps committed funds to start the Early Learning Community Initiative, SOAR-N4, for disadvantaged families. They were instrumental in efforts to unite agencies across the community to make collaborative decisions for the benefit of our community's youngest learners and their families. The initiative includes family events to prevent summer slide and monthly family events during the school year. The initiative brings together many community organizations, including the Early Learning Coalition of Manatee, Step Up Sun Coast, the South Florida Museum, Manatee County, the Central Library, the Art Center of Manatee, the Food Bank, and more. The school board and school district of Manatee County gratefully join Commissioner Corcoran in thanking Steve and Carolyn Ross Camp for their tremendous generosity and support of education in the children of Manatee County. So with our deepest thanks, we will present you with this award.
Can we move over in the middle here?
Why don't you all stand right here? We have some other guests with us. We have Robin Thompson, who is early learning for the district. We have Greg Sander, who's principal at Seabreeze. They're all involved in SOAR-N4. And then we have Sheila Halpin. So Sheila, can you all join us? And I'm sorry. Okay.
Now we have to scrunch together.
You all sit down this way. And before you all leave the field, then each just step up to the microphone beside the Ross Camps and Mary, and introduce yourselves.
There you go. Wait, wait, wait.
One more.
One more.
Yeah, a couple of you on that on the right side go to the left side.
It's always easier with elementary schools.
Greg Sander, principal of Seabreeze Elementary School.
Debbie Cook, assistant principal at Seabreeze Elementary School.
Thank you.
I'm Peggy O'Connor. I'm a teacher at Bayshore Elementary.
Thank you, Peggy.
Kathy Matei, SOAR-N4.
Mary Brager, a teacher at Seabreeze Elementary.
Thank you. All right.
If I can have just a minute.
Please, take a couple of minutes.
You know, we decided a few years ago to start to invest in the education of our elementary children. Our kids went through the school district here, and we had good experience, but we learned of the big challenge, especially for the Title I children. And we, I just knocked on the door of Seabreeze Elementary one day with this Debbie Cook and Greg Sander and said, "I'd like to help." And they looked at me, and we started to figure out what that might be. Fairly quickly, we met Sheila Halpin and Robin Thompson, and then Diana Green before, and Cynthia Saunders subsequently. And I wanted to point those people out because as we decided to invest, you really invest in people. You need people that have the energy, the passion, the ideas, and all to make things move forward. And so we think that our investment in the school district and through these people and others is helping us move in the direction that we want to move in. So for the board, I appreciate the support and latitude that you give to these folks to do their job and that we hopefully can help make things all better for these kids for the rest of their lives. So thank you for this recognition. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, the next on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the student progression plan. Excuse me, before that, we're going to...
Mr. Chairman, move the agenda as amended.
I'm sorry. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the August 13, 2019 Agenda, updated August 9, 2019, and posted to the district website. I understand we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Is that correct, Board Member Hope? And it's seconded by Board Member Kennedy. Is there discussion? The chair hearing none. The chair calls the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. The agenda is adopted unanimously. The next item is a public hearing concerning the student progression plan. So I'm going to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing for the board to hear public comments regarding the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan and answer questions related thereto. So the public hearing is open, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to Vice Chair Messenger with respect to any public comments concerning the student progression plan.
Correct. As the chair has said, this public comment section is only for the student progression plan. Is there anyone that would like to come forward to speak on the student progression plan? I think you had a couple signed up. Yeah, I think you were on the list. So come on down, Bridget, and then Jessica, you're next. Okay, Jessica, come on down, and then Bridget, you're next. I like that you're organized.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jessica Patterson, a Lakewood Ranch resident. Have three children. We have, Bridget has done a lot of work on this student progression plan, as usual. A few things that we wanted to, there's a lot, a lot of different changes. First of all, we wanted to say that nothing is marked out in red, nothing is crossed out. It's just changed. We have no idea what changes were from last year, so it's very hard to tell when everything is just, just as so. I don't know, how are we supposed to see the difference? On page 20, it says the elementary reading decision. It's not attached in here. Do you know what the, if you guys know what the elementary reading decision is, it breaks down. It should be in the progression plan. We'd like to see that. It talks about explicit systematic multisensory reading intervention. We have like just so many kids who are on iReady, and that iReady is not any of these things. We would like to see iReady added as, iReady is not one of these things that should be used. Thank you for your email, and maybe we could add some of the things that were, that should be used in the county. Another thing is, in the intervention plan, it says that who did not earn a Level 3 or higher within the last two academic may be enrolled or complete intensive. A lot of the principals are thinking this is must, this is may, and, you know, kids who are in honor roll should not be placed in intensive classes. We are seeing it all over the place. It's crazy. And that brings us to the waiver. It says that you may request the waiver. Sorry. And that is on, just because that was with it, that is on page 33. Parents may submit a written request of a waiver for the intensive. This waiver should be in the progression plan so people can get it. And that way, they can request it to, because we, like I said, we're seeing so many honors, honor roll kids who are being placed in intensive because they either didn't have a score or they got a test, an FSA score of one or two. But they're in honors and remedial. It makes no sense. Page 30. Goodness. The school district... Oh, the one thing I want to say, sorry. On page 38, principals may override district criteria placed in students for dual enrollment. Teacher, guidance counselor may override, not just the principal. Just because this teacher and the guidance counselor are the people who know the student, the principal should not be the only person who can override that. Thank you. I got everything. Thank you.
Come on down, Bridget.
This is really frustrating. This was never a workshop. We got the draft 30 minutes for the, you know, the June meeting. This is crazy to watch this. It's not due until October. So we had the page 38. Then we move on to middle school criteria for enrollment in high school credit courses. We want the word "both" removed. You must have a 3, 4, or 5, or have both the following. Teacher counselor admin recommendation or a grade point average. That's on page 39. I have, I know of multiple children who struggle with all kinds of issues. A child does, has a 3.4, and suddenly no advanced classes for that child. The word "both" has to be removed, and the teacher counts for something. 180 days matters for something. Let's see. Same thing with, you know, all through that section, page 40. Then we have page 42. We have begged you to stop grading benchmarks and interim assessments. I noticed on page 42, it is mentioned here. Sometimes our benchmarks and interim assessments also include a pre-test. I've heard from multiple teachers and parents of children who lose out on Bright Future scholarships because they don't have the GPA because you all are grading pre-tests. Material that these children have not seen. It's got to stop. We've got more "both" on page 44 and 43. Then we also, page 45, you left out that children should have the opportunity to take not just Manatee Virtual School, but Florida Virtual School. That has been left out on that page. Page 46, you say students must be notified in writing at each course about, you know, on the syllabus, how that their grades are calculated. Year after year, the syllabus does not include benchmarks and interim assessments, which is destroying kids' opportunities for scholarships. Then we go to page 52, accelerated enrichment. A student must have a 3.0 grade average and earn a 3 on the FSA to be able to take IB, ACE, and AP classes. No, no, no. Every year, you put this on here. My children would have been kicked out of their advanced classes again had you voted on this. Remove, and no testing is actually needed. If you go to IB and ACE to their, to their, to their main organizations, they don't need requirement. My friend went to an IB open house at Southeast. She said, "My kid opted out. He doesn't have a score." Principal said, "FSA scores are not necessary or needed to get into the IB program at Southeast," which is appropriate. He's following the rules. Page 60, you have CTE graduation pathway with a blank space for the number of credits that needs to be earned. It's vague. It makes no sense. Yet you go on over to page 64, and there it is, CTA graduation pathway. Explains how to do it. It is disorganized. It is verbose. Also, page 61, you say students may use Concordant scores of required state assessment waiver and Nobles, E-N-N-O-B-L-E-S, act to satisfy the requirement included in the document. Please do not vote on this tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak specifically on this student progression plan tonight?
Yes.
Come on down. And if you'll say your name for the record when you come, and spell it, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Hanson, and I'm speaking on behalf of my child, who is a sophomore at Lakewood Ranch High School, amongst other students who also are scoring 1 or 2s on the FSA but are in high honors or honored classes and then being forced into intensive class and losing on their electives. A little nervous, so I have a prepared statement that I'm going to read off of. Just help me along here. As a parent and educator, I am passionate about providing an education for all our students that empowers them with the tools and knowledge they will need in order to reach their highest potential. It greatly concerns me that a standardized test, such as the FSA, holds so much power in the determination of what classes or education will be made available to that child the following year. Our students, our students are children more than a test score and have various ways of demonstrating their intelligence that simply cannot be measured in one standardized test, that is not even differentiated to meet the various learning levels of the students taking it. Over the course of a school year, 180 days, students and teachers get to know each other. Formative and summative assessments are given. Differentiation occurs, and teachers hopefully use a variety of methods and materials to help their students develop their own learning style and reach their highest learning potential. For some students, learning will come easily, and they will achieve these things quickly. And for others, more time and resources may be needed. But what is important is that their own time learning does occur for those slower students, and confidence in the learning system is maintained. Many times when our children are only seen as a test score, their confidence begins to dwindle, and they give up on school and themselves. What I and so many other parents and educators would like to see changed in our county is that our school system is led by someone who believes in the whole child and uses teacher recommendations, report card grades, informative and summative assessments to determine the future placement of our children, and not just merely one FSA test score that is conducted on one day of the school year and doesn't differentiate to the different learning styles of our children. I know my daughter was sick on the day of her FSA test, and math, she missed getting a 3 by seven points. And now she's been placed in an intensive class. She's lost Spanish, Spanish 2, which she needs to graduate. And now I can't have her, she took Spanish 1 last year, and now is being removed from Spanish 2 this year, and I can't let that gap happen, and she's going to lose all the information that she had learned from last year and now has this year gap before maybe she can even take it again. I feel that now that she's in this lane, she's always going to be in this lane. And I feel like there's so many electives that shape our children that are going to help them to figure out their future employment in our workforce. And if we keep remediating and putting our kids in these intensive classes, we're not developing the whole child and giving them the chance to explore other courses or electives that might, like I said, hold their future and help them become a contributing member to our society. I just wish we could stop labeling our children and give our children a choice and a chance. Also, I'd like to add too that, you know, I'm an educator myself, and I do take this very seriously. And I have a tutor for my daughter, and we work with my daughter nightly on her, on her homework because we want her to do well. And I've heard from so many parents who are in these intensive classes that it has not made a difference in their, their test scores or in their education, that a lot of these, they just spend all their time on the computer. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the student progression plan today? Okay. That concludes the public comment for student progression plan hearing.
Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And does the superintendent have a recommendation concerning the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan for elementary school, middle school, high school, and K-12 virtual education?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the 2019-2020 Student Progression Plan policy for elementary school, middle school, high school, and K-12 virtual education.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation? Okay, the chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy.
I'd actually, given the comment that we heard kind of over the last 24 hours, I would, and I'll ask the superintendent in a second, if there is any harm in postponing the approval until our next meeting. And what I would like to do, if we can, is go over, yeah, could everybody please turn off your cell phone? Just take a second to do that. We have phones are out of control tonight. If we could go over the changes that we have ready to go for tonight, talk about those, get those settled out, and then come back at the next meeting to deal with some of the stuff that's been brought up in public comment. For example, I do, and I didn't, when I was preparing for the board meeting, I didn't even think about the strike through, copy of the document that we usually have. I would like to, I think that's a good idea, just for, because that's usually our process, is there is a, the old document is struck through, and then it's turned into the new one. It also gives us a chance to, to address or at least ponder some of the, some of the things we've heard tonight and we've seen over email for the past couple of days. So that's my suggestion. I don't know where everybody else is, or if the superintendent has a thought on it, too.
Okay. Is that a motion?
That was a suggestion for how to move forward. So no, it was not.
So no one did move it, so?
Okay, there has not been any motion to approve or disapprove the superintendent's recommendation. And the chair doesn't hear any motion at all concerning this matter.
Mr. Chairman, have a motion to postpone until August 27?
Okay, there's been a motion made by Board Member Kennedy, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to, I'm going to ask the...
Discussion.
I'm going to ask the board attorney, is postponed or is it table until the next meeting on August 27? What is the proper nomenclature?
The correct motion is to postpone.
Okay. The motion's been made to postpone the consideration of the superintendent's recommendation until the next meeting, which is on August 27, I believe. It's been seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. Is there discussion? Okay, the chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger for discussion.
Only that, my, I have an additional request. Can we, prior to that meeting, have a workshop? Because there was comment made about how they were promised another workshop, and that is accurate. At the workshop was presented, we were told, hey, we'd come back and have another workshop on it. That never happened, and I think that that's a realistic and reasonable request with a strike-through copy so that we can all kind of have a good conversation about it. To me, this isn't the best way to have a good conversation because we don't have the strike-through copy, which is also valid. And I looked through it, but it's hard to see the differences. I 100% agree with that. And so that, that would be my request, if we can find time. And I don't know what the workshop schedule's like on the 27th. We always seem to jam-pack them, which I like. I mean, I like as much information as possible, but that is my request to go along with that motion, if possible. And if not, I mean, maybe we just have the conversation, you know, during our public hearing, which is typically how it's done. It's just there were so many things thrown at us that I don't feel like I can accurately have that conversation because I don't have a strike-through copy to even, to even be able to compare. Now, I wrote a whole lot of page numbers of what they were saying, but it would be more beneficial for me, since we're at this point, to have had that copy to be able to really look at the changes.
Okay. Board Member Golden?
Yes.
Is this the same student progression plan that came before us a meeting or two ago? And we were told then that the updated student progression plan wasn't on the site until a day before? Am I, am I right about that? I'm, okay. Now, the next question I have is, did I not hear tonight that, again, the student progression plan that we are going to be considering now was not made available for another day? It's only been out there on the way up for a day or so? I thought I heard one of the speakers say that it was not provided. Is that not right?
Can I answer that?
Okay, I think that Vice Chair Messenger has some response, and I think the superintendent...
From my understanding, it was published for the entire week of our...
Or over 30 days.
Okay, it was published on the website.
Right.
But not a redlined copy? Just the amended copy? Okay.
And I guess the point I'm making is, I thought that we continued it the last time for us to give the public what they needed in order to make comments that would allow us to decide tonight. And the bottom line is, I'm hearing that that was not provided then. They did not get a redlined copy. Is that, is that a statement? Okay. Now, how long will this go on? So what we're asking for is a time certain for two weeks. Okay. Okay, Board Member Hope?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of the comments concerned me because I recall a couple of years ago, working on the issue... on the issue of the, you know, advanced placement courses or whatever, with, without the, the state test score upon the recommendation of the teacher, the guidance counselor, and the principal. I'm okay with the principal being the one that signs off, because I'm certainly assuming that the principal is going to weigh the recommendation of his faculty, his or her faculty, in making that decision, so I just, I, because I'm hearing that maybe that isn't clear, but I do want to make sure, I do want to ensure that the progress that we made over the past couple of years of cleaning this up is in a definitive copy for, for that reason. The other comment that I want to make is, I, I thought I heard a statement regarding the GPA for dual enrollment, and I wanted to make sure the public was clear that those are University of South Florida admission requirements. So if we have a GPA in there for dual enrollment, it's because of our agreement with the University of South Florida with regards to students that would be eligible for, for dual enrollment. But I do want to ensure that we do not have a situation across the board, whether it's for dual enrollment, whether it's for AP, International Baccalaureate, the ACE program, that one standardized test score, and I'm not dinging standardized test, but that one test score is not going to limit a child's ability to, to take the most rigorous courses that they can take and be successful. With regards to the issue of these remedial classes, I hope that we do not have students who are being forced or manipulated into a remedial course while they're in an advanced placement course, whether it's in language arts or whatever, because of a test score. I mean, I hope that there's a very clear definitive process that students with their parents can question their child being forced to go into a remedial course, whether it's in, in, in algebra, or, or, or math, or language arts, or whatever, when their teachers don't believe they need to be in it. And I heard some comments to the fact that at least a parent has a child that's in that situation, and I would think that if a parent is an educator and knows their child, that we would weigh the recommendations of that, that student's prior teachers and guidance counselor, and not waste a day of the school year in a course that's not going to benefit the child.
Okay, thank, thank you, Board Member Hope. Madam Superintendent, you have some comments?
Well, I was just trying to answer some of the questions that were possibly posed. We didn't have a workshop, and I believe it was deemed, but I do think that there could possibly be another workshop, but I do think our agendas have been full, so I think that is what happened. It has been, the amended recommendations have been posted for 30 days. Reverend Golden, I think the issue stating is that maybe the redline copy wasn't there, but the changes have been presented, and I do believe the person that was in charge with that has been out of commission for a while. But Ms. Ghost will make sure that we do have a redline copy. That has been an unusual situation this year, because that is not the norm. Some of the points that were made today, we, we had captured to change, one of which the waiver document to put in there, we had, that was stated the last time, that will be listed. We also got comments from people on the committee that for AP options, that it would be same applicable for IB and ACE, so that that was going to be cleaned up. In terms of going into advanced courses, there, there's always been more than one test score or pathway. You could have a PER, you could have an SAT, an ACT, we list, there are plenty of concordant other type of documents or data that can be used to determine. Dual enrollment is set by the colleges, so they did kind of streamline since ACE, IB, AP, or college level, they've made kind of a similar language, but there's always a waiver in addition to that, that the principal can sign off for a child to be placed in those academic accelerated courses. So those are there. I believe in terms of remediation, it does state it's two or more years of not being at or on grade level is what triggers for the multi-tiered level of support. Again, there could be other documentation and data presented to the principal to change or waive that requirement. Now, you are right, it does seem odd that you would be in a college-level AP course and in remediation. If those situations are occurring, I strongly suggest a meeting with the principal or the guidance counselors, because that does seem to contradict one another. But again, there are many concordant scores that you can receive to meet graduation from high school requirements. But if we would like, we can try to schedule an additional redline copy for the workshop, and then follow there and put it on the agenda to vote upon, in two weeks.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent, Board Member Golden.
There seems to be a lot of discussion about a single test score being used to justify placement.
Right.
Is there any objection to simply saying that no placement would be justified by a single test score? I mean, it just, reciprocal, well, the reciprocal is that if you're, if you're not going to justify removing somebody with a single test score, then why not just say it takes more than a single test score to, to make a placement?
Okay, thank, thank you, Board Member Golden. Well, Board Member Hope?
First, I'll, I'll respond to Reverend Golden. I, I mean, I would not support that, because, I mean, I will tell you, in, in Europe, you go to college in Europe, you take one test at the end of the exam, and that shows your proficiency in that subject matter, after a whole year's worth of a course. And so if someone can succeed in a test that has been proven, I would not want to, to say that that student can't use that one test that has evaluated their competency, so that, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's as reciprocal as you, you, you may believe. But again, I just want to make sure that a test, I mean, I, I, I do believe that especially when we're talking about these types of courses, that our teachers, who we entrust with being able to assess a child's ability, a student's ability, as well as the guidance counselor and the principal, should be able, I just want to make sure that there's not, I understand the concurrency, and, you know, an ACT can substitute for that. I don't want one test, regardless of that test, to limit a, a teacher, or the guidance counselor, or the principal, to be able to collaborate on that student's ability to succeed in the rigors of an advanced course.
But I'll, I'll say it like...
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hope. Okay. Board Member Golden, did you have a further comment?
Yes, I'll, I'll just say it like he just said it.
Okay, then he said it. Okay, thank you. What, okay, Board Member Kennedy?
Just, the, the one thing we did talk about at the work, at the first workshop, was adding a copy of the waiver, the superintendent's already mentioned this, and Ms. Ghost is already on it, adding a copy of the waiver to the document, so that will take care of that. Dr. Hope, you had mentioned about the language on the final page, about the statutory language and the update dates being kind of confusing and outdated. My suggestion was just to be, to just delete that whole page. Michelle has handed you a copy of the three items. I, I kind of stole yours, one of these three is yours, but I, we could just include some kind of disclaimer that it's updated annually, it's, it's right here on this page. And then finally, Heather Wallace sent us a, some suggested verbiage about, there was verbiage about AP fees, the, the restocking fee, and she wanted to bring, her suggestion was to bring the IB and ACE testing fees to, to create a...
Alignment.
A level playing field there, yeah, so that's the, that's the third one at the bottom. So I just wanted to bring those up, to bring them to your attention, and we can come back to it in two weeks.
Okay, well, I, I sense there's some consensus of postponing a decision on this for two weeks. Now, I, do I understand from the superintendent that, you know, somehow we could work it into a workshop, you know, approximately 13 days from now, or 14 days from now? I think the complexity of this calls for at least an hour, you know, for, you know, the board to go through it. And I, I understood the superintendent said that she would provide a, a redline, you know, copy, you know, to board members. Would it be a problem to provide that redline copy online, you know, for the community, you know, at least a week before the 13th as well? And would, would it be possible in the, along with the, the redline copy, you know, to the public, a response to the questions that were posed tonight by these two ladies of concerns? You know, maybe they're based on a misunderstanding or what, but certainly there's a lot of passion and concern on their part that it isn't the best interest of the, the children, and that's why we're all here, you know, to leave things the way that they are in some, some specific ways. Now, I, I'm not able to judge, but I would really like to have the superintendent's response in writing, maybe you agree, maybe you disagree, or this is not really, it's a misunderstanding, you know, on, on the part of these ladies about what we're going on. But I think they ought to be applauded for their concern and their preparation, and I think it deserves, you know, some kind of, you know, response, and, and prior to, you know, the workshop, so the board members can consider that in their evaluation, and it may be that, just the way it is, is, would be approved that day, or it might be approved with certain amendments because of, you know, greater understanding by everyone involved. And if the superintendent could do that, I think it would aid in going along. So, the, we, we're discussing a, a motion that was made by Board Member Kennedy, and it was seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to postpone this matter until August 27th. Do I have that date correct? And that we have also on that date, I guess, a workshop concerning the, the matter. Okay, if there's no further discussion that the, the chair hears, I'm going to call the question and ask all those in favor of Board Member Kennedy's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hope, nay. Board Member Kennedy's motion is approved unanimously. Thank you all, this was a very, very good discussion, thank you, audience members for, for listening and explaining and giving us some insight about this very important topic. Okay, now, the next item is a public, I guess we're going to close the public hearing with respect to the student progression plan, and so it is hereby closed, congratulations. And we'll go on to approval of, or, a public hearing concerning policy amendments. The Vice Chair, I think that you're in charge of a public hearing to see if there's any public comments.
I, you think you have to open?
Yeah, we got, we got to open the public hearing on the, what are we, changes to school board policy. Please correct me if I'm wrong, we got a very informed staff over here who can go like this and say yes, and I've learned that it's wise to follow their suggestions. So I'm going to ask the, you know, Vice Chair to see if there's any public comments concerning the proposed changes to school board policy.
Okay, so this public comments section is only to the changes in school board policies, and I'm going to read the policy numbers, just so everyone's aware, if they'd like to come and speak on these specific policies. Policy 2111, parent and family involvement in the school program. Policy 260, non-discrimination and access to equal education opportunity. Policy 2623, student assessment. Policy 5112, entrance requirements. Policy 9150, school visitors. Policy 9270, equivalent education outside the schools or home education. And with that, is there anyone that would like to speak on those specific policy changes? Mr. Nelson, come on down. I think you know the rules, I don't think I have to read that out to you.
I'm back again, Norm Nelson. Maybe to make it easier for the subjects to come up, is policies, and we don't know what they are. Or are they policies that are up to dated by NEOLDA, and you're just approving them? Or are they brand-new policies that you've written, that somebody's written? If you could distinguish the difference, instead of NEOLDA? I'd be, yeah, okay, that's a NEOLDA correction, that's all we pay them for. That's my only thought.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes public comment.
Okay, we're going, we're going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask our superintendent if she has a recommendation concerning the approval of amendment and adoption of school board policies that have been set forth in the agenda.
Yes, I recommend the approval of the amendments to Policy 2111, parent and family involvement in the school program. Policy 2260, non-discrimination and access to equal education opportunity. Policy 2623, student assessment. Policy 5112, entrance requirements. Policy 9150, school visitors. And Policy 9270, equivalent education outside the schools.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Some motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Board Member Kennedy, seconded by Vice Chair Messenger to approve the superintendent's recommendation. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Board Member Kennedy, you're recognized.
I just have two really easy changes. This is in 9150, the school visitors section.
Oh, gosh.
And if you scroll down a little bit, this is in the visitation by school board members section.
Okay. I read that.
So this is about us.
Uh-huh.
There's just a missing word here at the beginning. Individual board members may visit, the word "may" is not there. It says individual board members visit a district school at any time, so there should be a "may" there. Okay?
I, I also think that states statutes.
It is.
Oh, so there's a typo in the state statute?
Well, there's, no, 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 no.
Oh, you mean, we took it from...
The language of the, the, the language in the statutes is, is pretty clear.
Yeah, we have to be able, yeah, we have to have access, yeah, sure. We don't, we're not required to, it's not a shall.
It's a can.
Yeah, can't, either way, may or can, that's fine. And then at the bottom of that, in the next paragraph, on the board work, it's bumped, it's bumped to the next page, but it says pursuant, this is the end, the, the new changes, pursuant to by law 0172, if during a visit to a school or program, a board member observes a situation or condition which causes concern, comma, she, he should discuss the situation first with the superintendent as soon as convenient or appropriate. My suggestion is to change that to a shall, and I think that's, there's really two things here, is number one, is if I see an issue at a school, I don't go and intervene with a principal or a teacher, because that's not my role, I go and intervene with the superintendent. So I think putting a shall there commands us as board members that we have to go to the superintendent first. That's my thought. I don't know what you guys think.
Okay, let me clarify this. Are you, it, it seems like you made a motion to approve, and it was seconded by, by Chair Messenger.
Right.
Okay? Now, in, in discussion, it sounds like you're asking to... Now, in discussion, it sounds like you're asking to, to modify the rec, your own motion.
Well, I can make a motion to amend with the changes I'm suggesting, and we can vote on that, too.
Okay, okay, excuse me, councilors and board members. You heard my remark that it, it sounds as though Mr. Kennedy, board member Kennedy, would like to amend the motion that he made that was seconded. Now, I understood him just to say that he would like to modify his motion, you know, for what he just said. Is that correct?
Sure, yeah, that's.
Okay, okay, now, I'm asking our board attorney, is, is that okay to proceed with a, a vote to approve board member Kennedy's motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation as modified by his recent statements? They're just almost Scrivener error or, you know, kind of changes. And I'm asking Mr. Di, can, can we proceed, you know, properly with that?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I understood, I think the first comment Mr. Kennedy made, it probably is in the nature of a Scrivener's error, a dropped-out word somewhere along the line.
Yeah.
The second one, I, I took it as to be a question for the draftsperson of the policy, rather than an actual motion. I don't, I don't know if I misunderstood.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kennedy's.
Real quick.
Okay, chair recognizes board member Kennedy.
I, I'm, I'm just putting forward to the board, should we change "should" to "shall" in that sentence? If the board doesn't want to do it, there's no need to amend.
We're not gonna amend it without a motion that's approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, board member Hope.
Allow me to help.
Well, if you have some state.
Mr. Kennedy was posing something for discussion. You did not call on another board member to participate in the discussion. You then moved to try to explain that maybe it was a motion, but it wasn't a motion. What would be helpful for us is when a board member poses something for discussion among the other board members, call the other board members, and then you can bring it in for a landing.
Thank you, teacher.
So, I would like to respond.
Okay, you're not recognized for that. I don't like that.
Go for it.
Okay, we're going to, you have that, we're gonna call the question. All those in favor of board member Kennedy's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Point order, which?
Okay, which one? I guess the most recent one.
Are we voting to approve the policies without discussing the changes?
No, we're going to approve your motion as you have amended.
I think you made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll start all over. If, if there's no approval of any motion right now, is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation? I don't hear any.
That we already have.
Okay.
That was me and then Gina.
Okay, so.
The question of what do we do about these two words?
Okay, so, we, we had this motion that's moved and seconded, and I guess, is there any further discussion about that? Okay, board, vice chair Messenger.
It sounds like the superintendent has something to illuminate, but I just want to add that what Mr. Nelson said about the executive summaries, when it says where this comes from, and it was, I think when it's a new one, I think it does state this is a new policy, but I think it would be beneficial for everyone to be able to say this came from Neola. That, I just wanna illuminate that, that I would support that in the future if we could do that when there's a policy change, to make that clear for everyone. I would appreciate that. In reference to what you suggested, it sounds like there are certain things that are in statute, so obviously we have to follow whatever that says. I don't really think the word "shall" is necessarily appropriate there, but I do agree that if we can add the word "may" in the beginning, "may" visit, that totally makes sense.
Can.
Or can, I don't, you know, the lawyers, you know, decide which word "may" or "can", to me, they mean the same thing, but I know that to, right, I'm sure that's true. So, anyways, I defer to whatever the, the lawyers and the superintendent say on that.
Hey, Madam Superintendent, it sounds like you have something to contribute to this discussion.
Yes, sir. This one is a statute update, so we were updating our policy due to the new legislation that occurred about the visits, so, and it says, well, I don't have it there. So, if you'll, could you read it, Michelle, off of yours?
Well, first of all, our current policy, right now, states that if the board members believe the situation or condition serious enough, he or she may wish to also, okay, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Should, it, it says right now, should discuss the situation first. So, that is not a change that Neola is bringing forward in this amended language. That is currently what our policy states. So, this would be, if that's what you want to do, that would be a change coming from you and not Neola. Okay?
Statute.
Statute right now says, visitation of schools, visit the schools, observe the management instruction, give suggestions for improvement, and advise citizens with the view of promoting interest in education and improving the schools.
So, the other was a Neola update based on that statute.
Good, thank, okay, thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, was that, you know, help in your comments? We have on, on the table approval of the superintendent's, you know, recommendation. Now, we've heard some explanation about the changes. Is there any further comment concerning some discussed changes? Okay, board member Kennedy.
Mr. Di, so if it's just a Scrivener's error, we don't need a motion to amend, we can just, may or can, we can include may or can.
Authorize, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no, Mr. Di's been asked a question.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Chair, Mr. Kennedy, what I would suggest is now that everybody is aware that there is a Scrivener's error, go ahead and, and move to add the missing word while, while it's a live item, and, and that way, all doubt is removed.
Okay. The board member Hope.
Given the fact that we have a number of these policies, I, my suggestion for the motion would be to authorize the superintendent with the board's general counsel to make any technical corrections that are deemed necessary. That would take care of missing words and, and things like that. That would be the motion that I would make.
Would still be a motion to amend.
Mr. Di.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion under consideration to allow for the superintendent to make technical changes as necessary.
Mr. Di, does that pass muster?
No.
He's asking, he is modifying his motion to include the language you suggested, and if the secretary, who is, who is vice chair Messenger agrees to that amendment, can we go forward with a vote for this amended motion?
Mr. Chairman, yes, you can.
Okay, so, board Messenger, board member Vice Chair Messenger, do you agree to that? Okay, that was simple, wasn't it? All right, is there any further discussion? Chair hearing none, will call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. This, this superintendent's recommendation is approved as amended. Okay? The, so, I think we bring this, I think that concludes that item of business. Okay. Superintendent, you have a recommendation concerning approval of minutes.
Public comment.
Oh, okay, public comments. Vice chair Messenger, you're, you're up. Okay?
Okay, I'm just gonna read our policy. Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speakers must stand at the podium and not approach the dais. If a speaker has a handout to present to the board, those must be given to the agency clerk for distribution. This is a business meeting of the school board, and the public expects that we conduct it in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section. And with that, I will start with Mr. Nelson, and after Mr. Nelson will be Cassia Stamp.
I'm Norm Nelson. I originally had a handout for you, but this afternoon session changed my mind, and I got something else. One of the things you talked about, or had, I think I mentioned this first, I was very impressed with this. Great thing about the strategic plan and the method of doing it. The only thing you need to know is, he mentioned this is a thing that was published five years ago and gathered dust, and I can tell you it did. The other thing is, if you adopt this plan, who is we humanity? Is that the superintendent over here? Or is this everybody on the desk? This doesn't tell us it, it separates it. The previous superintendent was asked about it, because it's been in my briefcase for five years. Been in my briefcase, and I'm still waiting for the key indicators. You had all those goals, what did you do about it? What did you do about it? Another thing that Reverend Golden brought, what do you do about those issues? What happened in those five years? Where are the key indicators? So, hopefully, when you go through with this damn thing, you become we humanity as a board. I don't want the superintendent as a changes tomorrow and says, this is her plan, not mine. It's either all of yous. Don't waste my money on this glossy sheet if you're not gonna follow through. Thank you.
Cassia Stamp, and after Cassia Stamp, we will have Angel Potter.
Good evening, I'm Cassia Stamp. I'm a teacher at Lincoln Memorial Academy. I've been to the last few board meetings that you all have held, because obviously I have a vested interest in what's going on at LMA. And I'm standing to speak tonight because I have been surprised and kind of dismayed at how issues surrounding our school have been handled by the board. I believe you all have shown a little bit of callousness and disrespect for our community, and I feel like there's been a lack of due process with issues surrounding our school. We had a lot of assurances from Ms. Saunders after the vote was made to terminate our charter, that you all wanted us to continue as a charter, you wanted our programs to continue, and that you were only stepping in for operations from a fiscal standpoint. But there's been no attempt whatsoever by the district to secure a contract with total life prep, so that we could continue with our curriculum that we've been using since we became a charter. There's been, so essentially, we were left with nothing. We were left in chaos, we were left in disarray, we were left confused with a lot of questions, people were scared for their jobs, we didn't know how we were gonna handle the kids coming back to us, we didn't know where we stood. And, you know, it's been an almost untenable situation. So, I read a comment, or I read a quote from you, Mr. Minor, in the paper, that LMA is an issue that's dear to all of our hearts, and that you all did what you did for the well-being of the children. But if that were true, I would think that when our board representative, Mr. Kennedy, requested a special meeting to be held to discuss the issues surrounding LMA, I would think that you would have voted to have that meeting. But when you had your last board meeting, you all couldn't even be bothered to hear comments from us about LMA, and about how the hastiness of your actions have affected us. So, honestly, I think at this point, we would love even if we could have somebody up here besides Mr. Kennedy, just show the decency to be able to look at us and say, you know what, I think we did act hastily, or maybe we could have handled this differently, or we didn't realize the magnitude of the ramifications that our actions would have. But instead, all we've gotten so far from you guys are emails with statutes to defend the legality of your position. But I think we would all, as a staff, like a little bit less of that and a little bit more just compassion, and a little bit of decency when you're talking about our staff and our students and our families, because they're the ones that are left with the fallout from the hastiness with which you've acted. And that's all I really wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angel Potter? Jamie Potter? I think they're a duo. Jamie Potter? Okay, well, Mr. Hoover, come on down, and after Mr. Hoover, David Mason.
Good evening, everybody. I do find it interesting that, you know, two board meetings ago, you put an item on the agenda at the last minute, and you don't give the very person who founded this school the opportunity to speak. That's wrong. You put it on at the last minute. Just let them speak. It's not hard to do. Let the people speak. You had the audacity today to criticize Dr. Hope's for even suggesting decreasing the So, regarding the millage, let's figure out a way to pay our teachers and bus drivers without the millage. That's what we should do, instead of putting them in a position where they may be, their pay may be taken away from them. I'm not saying it's easy, but at least try. Show us you can try. Nobody is looking at expenses to figure out a way, but you can do all things. So, I asked this board, figure out a way to pay our teachers and bus drivers, and that way we can, you know, you asked for 33 million, yeah, you said one mil, the public heard 33 million. You got 38, almost 39, you're gonna get 40. That's a huge amount of difference, and you just wanna keep it. Two of you, I guess, admit to being tax-and-spend liberals. That's what I heard earlier today. If the only other two could come out and maybe admit it, too, that way we know where you stand. But let's figure out a way to help out our teachers and bus drivers. Show us, put forth the effort. Don't just say it's impossible, we can't do it. Try it. See where you can find it, and that way they won't be in a position, because it didn't pass by much. In the legislature, as you know, put the sales tax on, that you have to do it on a general election. Well, I predict this next legislative session, they're gonna make sure you put any millage increases on a general election. So, something that passed 51 to 49 percent, that most likely is gonna be on a general election, it's gonna come back to you, because you didn't take the time to do what I'm proposing. Let's figure out a way. It can be done. It can be done. Thank you very much.
David Mazin. And after David Mazin, Rodney Jones.
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend David Mazin. We give an honor to our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ. Good evening to this, uh, school board and representative of Manatee County. The Apostle Paul says, "Be steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord, because your labor is not in vain in the Lord." As we appeal and instill to you this beautiful Tuesday night here at the county building on Manatee Avenue, this day of August 13th, 2019, we are here to establish an attitude and request urgency of the facts of a relationship that has become bitter, resentful, factuous, and disagreeable over the past few years. We want to assure this august body of representatives, this august body of representatives, the head of this monster is far less greater than the obstacles and the inheritance of the throne of David. We may not be able to convince you about all which has transpired in this past few weeks, but we want to make certain, we want to make sure that you know that we understand that lies, lies, are an infectious disease that grows as a cancer. We understand the process of political incarceration. We understand when carrots are being offered to those that are less fortunate than you. We understand. We understand when a political transition of monetary gain that includes our children can excite those who are vulnerable to the necessity of paying their bills, and those who believe are succeeding through monetary gain will be conducive for their ongoing success. I said to you all, we understand. But this, we want you to, we want to leave with you and hope you will also understand that Memphis community, the Latino community, the Washington Garden community, and we, the Council of Concerned Clergy of Manatee County, will capture, regain, retain, conquer what's rightfully ours. We will bring this school, Lincoln Memorial Academy, back into the hands of our community. So now I speak from the hearts of the depth of this community. We are not going away until justice has been served. Our recommendation is...
Thank you. Rodney Jones, and then Joanna Phillips.
Hey, greetings, everyone. It's been a difficult experience for all of us in our communities. It's not just the Palmetto community. It's Bradenton. It's everywhere as it relates to what you did on the 23rd to that school. It was the most disrespectful and disingenuous process I think I've ever seen. It broke the trust with the community, and a large portion of the community saw what you did. You added something to the agenda at the last minute. And if, Dave, I see why it took you six years to get to that school board chair because if you made that kind of mistake with adding a word to some policies or something, you can imagine the mistakes that you made with that shenanigans that y'all pulled on the 23rd, and it's going to come back to get you. We assure you either one way or another. So we were just very disappointed. We have some question, and I wish someone would ask the question. Darlene Crew. She gave the same reference that Ed Hunley did to Sarasota County. Ed Hunley got revoked after the appeal process, his certificate, but Darlene Crew gave the same recommendation.
Point of order.
Okay.
Point of order. Rodney, you can't talk about specific employees.
Okay, I got it.
Direct that to the superintendent.
Okay, well, an employee. Can I do that?
Well, you've kind of already named her, but...
I know, but can I?
Generally speaking, you can't call out employees. You can call us out all you want.
Even if it's the truth?
No, you can't do that.
Even if it's the truth, that's got to go through the superintendent.
Okay. Well, and, well, I apologize, but if an employee gave a recommendation just like Mr. Hunley did, why haven't we heard anything about her? If the Manatee County School District, School District of Manatee County has a failure to report, which they do, why aren't you guys held accountable? And you're making a big mistake as well when you talk about policy and the responsibility of the board. Cynthia Saunders, in my opinion...
Okay, you know, that's out of order.
What? She's right here.
She's also an employee.
Gina?
Mr. Chair? Yes. My recommendation that if Mr. Jones has a comment upon a person's job performance, that's fair game.
Thank you.
If it's something personal, then I think that's off the table. But if it's about board policy, board implementation, I think that's open for fair comment.
Can I have my time back, please? No, you didn't. That clock kept running. Come on now. Y'all pimps all the way around, man. I'm looking right at the clock, and you're saying you stopped it. All right. And so it was just disrespectful, and it was disingenuous. And if we want to work on policies, you talk about a citizens oversight committee. We need one for her when it relates to when she gets allegations or she gets things. You got the superintendent that decides whether or not these get vetted. What if the problem is with her? Who vets it then? Because we've submitted several problems, and now we've had to take to the state, which we did today. Several problems with her that we've emailed you guys. I've been up here passing out flyers. You know, I've been told to sit down, that we've had problems, and you just completely ignore them like they don't occur. And it's a shame that we can't handle these problems internally where we have to go to the state with problems. But that's the situation that you have created as board members. Because when we bring things up, you just sit up there like a bump on a log or something, and you don't say anything. Like, these problems go away. And they don't. They just manifest, and they become cancerous like they have now. So I think you've created some problems for yourself. I clearly feel like, Mr. Minor, you violated our civil rights at the last meeting. I think ACLU will be speaking to you at the state level, be speaking to you about those concerns. And you guys are just making a mess of yourself in broad daylight, in public. Like, the people, and not only black people or brown people, like, people aren't seeing what you're doing. You've lost containment of this, is what you've done. You've lost containment of this, and you've got problems coming. So thank you for your time.
Joanna Phillips. And after Joanna Phillips, Arthur Huggins.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As I've stated before, I am the registrar of Lincoln Memorial Academy. At this moment, I call it Lincoln because it's not Lincoln Memorial Academy. Today, the news crew came to speak to me, and I spoke with them. After I finished speaking with them, I was told that I'm not allowed to speak to any news crew and that they need to be barred from our campus. But three weeks ago, a month ago, they were flooding our campus with all the lies that were spilled from this school board. Now we're speaking our truth. We're standing up for our rights. And I just need to know, is there a policy that says a news crew can't come on our campuses? Because they were there. They were also at Ghetto Toyota. So is there a rule that says ABC News or Bay News Nine? Any other news station can't come on campuses? I have blown the whistle like I did before. You guys need to stop. Like Rodney said, it's out of control. Now we're speaking our truth.
Arthur Huggins. And after Arthur will be Margie Woodson.
Good afternoon. I come to comment towards the motion, actually, that was made on the 23rd. It did speak as follows. It said to take over, in part motion, it said to take over Lincoln Memorial Academy Charter School and assume and continue the operation of the charter school. My complaint, my argument, my comment towards that is that this is not what happened. It doesn't, it did not continue normal operation. There are some things that actually, that are going forth that I think is horrendous, is a disgrace when it comes to a school, when it comes to teachers that are being provided for these students. They are not teachers that actually have degrees, and they are just being kind of tossed in there in these core classes, if you would. We had parents complaining about their students not receiving the proper education moving forward. There's also been a interruption with transportation. There are school buses that are given to these, to the school. The word in part of your motion was said that you would actually use the appropriate things, the appropriate things, like appropriate principals. I don't find this bus being the appropriate thing, transportation that is being used. It was actually pulled out of the surplus, from my understanding, and used to give to these children to transport back and forth. And from my understanding, public school don't use surplus buses. They're not allowed to use them, but I guess they felt like it was appropriate for these students to be transferred here at LMA. And secondly, thirdly, I should say, is that the principal that was supposed to be appropriate, he was actually pushed away, and I mean literally pushed away a couple of years ago from the same school for lack of productivity, from my understanding. But now he's back at LMA as the appropriate principal. It's kind of discouraging. And I don't know if it's the word appropriate that I'm so fixed on because I just don't believe that had this school been out further east, that you would use those appropriate buses, nor those appropriate principals, nor the appropriate teachers to help educate our school. And I just want to stress that it is hurting our teachers. It's hurting our students and our community at large. And my prayer is, somebody, that anybody will move beyond their feelings and try to bring correctness to this problem. Thank you.
Margie Woodson. Margie, and then after Margie will be Dexter McDonald.
Good evening to the chair and the board members. My name is Margie G. Woodson. I have a question. I called to the school board. No, I came first. Then I was told I needed to call to get a copy of the minutes of July 23rd board meeting. She told me what to do. I did that. And then they said the minutes were not available. Yet I see here tonight on the agenda, we have public comments before the July 23rd minutes. And that was the reason we wanted the minutes, so that we could comment. But now we got the cart before the horse because the minutes are going to come after public comment. So we'd like to see, I don't know how it needs to be done, that we could come back and speak after the July 3rd minutes. July 23rd, thank you. July 23rd minutes. Because that's what we wanted to talk about, but yet we were told the minutes were not available.
Can I make a suggestion? Can I make a suggestion?
Because we don't, we can't make the comment. We couldn't get the minutes. I'm asking the question. I'm asking the question. Can somebody answer that? July 23rd minutes were not available, and they're going to come after public comment.
Love to address this. Mrs. Woodson, can I use part of your one minute?
There is no one else.
Nope, no. Mr. Kennedy, you're out of order.
Actually, no. According to our bylaws, no, I'm not.
Okay, we're going to have a recess.
Oh, my gosh.
Please sit down. We're going to resume this meeting, or we're going to clear this meeting, okay? Now, we have certain procedures here that we ask to be respected by everyone in the audience and on the board. For Mr. Kennedy to talk, he should have sought permission from the vice chair. She was in charge of this, he did not do so. The opinion of the chair and of council is he was out of order. Now, we're going to resume right now. Thank you very much. You have some questions?
Okay, yes, I'm back to my question. I would like to have due process, because when I called down here and asked for the minutes, I told that I would be able to get them. The email that she sent me did not make them available to me. So if they weren't ready and I couldn't get them, she should have told me that, rather than have me continue to go online and continue to go online, and I still couldn't get them, because we desperately wanted to read them. So my thing still stands. My question still stands. After the minutes, can we come back with comments? Because then we will have heard it, since we could not read it in advance.
Thank you.
Audience will be quiet, this is her time, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dexter McDonald. And after Dexter, Geneva Prusha. Come on down Dexter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am Pastor Dexter McDonald, Pastor of Community Outreach, Word and Deliverance Ministry, 650 27th Street East. I grew up on the corner of 17th Street in front of Lincoln. And tonight, as I stand before you, I stand before you as a liaison speaking for our community. Now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when LMA was established, there were four partners to help convert Lincoln to LMA. The first partner was Mr. Hunley, who was a visionary. The second, the school board had to vote for Lincoln to become a charter school. Thirdly, the faculty and staff had to agree to embrace the school in becoming a charter school. And fourthly, the community had to embrace Lincoln to be converted from Lincoln to LMA. As you know, there have been some major changes that have taken place at LMA over the last three weeks. Without the community being a part, as a chosen liaison of my community, which I grew up in, we are requesting that there is a board established, and the board be established following the following parameters. And I want to make this statement. Elected officers of the school board, a local community, should be held to a high standard of authority, integrity, unbiased impartiality, and accountability. They hold both the community and the school trust through specific legal and democratic process in which the general and democratic process of justice are implemented and applied. For most private schools, the district school board exists primarily to formulate policies and give direction. The board is charged with furthering the school's mission and ensuing the success of all schools. As I stated earlier, the community has not been involved in the decisions that are made at LMA. Here's my suggestions for those people that will serve on this board. First of all, they must belong as a longstanding resident of the Memphis community. They must have a vested interest in LMA. They must identify themselves as having a part of their history within the community. Represent local community, have a special expertise, be aware of the community, not seeking to promote agendas, and genuinely concerned. I recommend that on 8/27, LMA is on the agenda. Thank you.
We received that document today, I appreciate that, thank you. Geneva Prusha and Merelina Parm.
My name is Geneva Prishay, and I want to tell you that Mr. Nelson or Nelson convinced me that I should speak, because for most of these meetings, I've observed that what we say falls on deaf ears in the main. You've already made your minds up, you've already made your decisions. We need to get to you before you come to this point. But I'm here tonight, because it's appalling to me, not just what has been, how Lincoln has been handled, but also the disrespect that's been shown to these officials who have these administrators over Lincoln. Let me tell you what I felt like sitting here at the last meeting. I felt like an unruly colored picnini, because I felt that's how you were treating these educated, professional people, the way you handle them here in these meetings. It was, again, my word for it is appalling. And it was very saddening to see it. Some of the representatives here I know, and some I love dearly, I still love dearly, and have worked with that person over the years, because I felt that they were immensely qualified to work in our community. But to see how this school has been handled, someone who, a school has been in existence for one year, and you all have been here for year after year after year, and I've heard the group of ladies there say that you still haven't gotten so many things right, as you've ignored the community. And what I've heard here, two of the representatives here say this, that we should work with the children, the students, and the community, their parents. And I like that we're supposed to, but you have not worked with these people at Lincoln Middle School, because the community said what they wanted to do. And who made the five of you, or all of you up here, gods over us? You're not. And that if you think you're the only voice that knows what to say, that, you know, you're the only voice that knows us, you're sadly mistaken. And so I've not even been involved on this level, but this whole thing with Lincoln has made me involved. And it showed me about imperialism. You guys are imperialistic as you sit here. You're elected officials. And hopefully that meant, as Bishop McDonald was saying, is that you have some kind of empathy, compassion for the community, for the people that you do represent. These children have been left in a dismal state. When I left here, when I was a student at Lincoln, I felt that school belonged to me. I identified with it, and it was a pleasure going to school. I've deserved, as I've returned to this community after, you know, 30 or so years away, that these kids, just particularly the black and the brown, they just go to school. It's not their school. They go to school, they show up there, except for maybe the athletes and some of those academic folk who score very highly. For everybody else, they just go there. This was an opportunity for this to become somebody's school that's from that community. And I sensed going there to that school and seeing some of the children, they feel that it's now their school. But you've taken it away again, and made, now, I never saw bureaucracy move so quickly before, except when you guys moved to take away LMA. I've never, bureaucracy doesn't move like that. Now, I'm not against you, this board, because you are a governing body, and I want you and us to do the right thing for our children and for this community.
Merelina, please. Merelina Parm. Merelina, and after Merelina, Heather Wallace.
Good evening. My name is Merelina Parm. Excuse me, I got to get myself together. I do not have children at this time that attend Lincoln Memorial. But my daughters went to Palmetto Elementary up under Mr. Hunley. My youngest daughter went to Lincoln under Mr. Hunley. She just graduated from Palmetto High. Anybody that knows anything about Mr. Hunley, including everybody up here, regardless of whether you want to believe it or not, or whether or not you want to let it be known from your own mouths, you know that this is a man that loves children, period. So with everything that's been spewed out in the paper about this man, like, he is actually the victim, and the board is kind of the culprit, in so many words. Because it's been, it's like he's been seen to make, like, he's been, like, he's a predator. And God in heaven knows that that is the furthest thing from the truth. But that's all you've gotten in the last year, in every article from Bradenton Herald, Bradenton Tribune, whatever, Bradenton, is that this man is some kind of a monster. And it's disheartening, to say the least. At the last meeting on the 23rd, it was said that a governing body from the pub, from the community would be put together. As of today, school has already started, and of course, that hasn't happened. The only thing that has happened is a tearing down of a school and the children that love that school. The staff that love that school, and it's just, it's sad, to say the least. And I'm just here today, I'm not going to say I'm begging for anything, I just think that we need somebody, or everybody, to just do the right thing. And that's all that we're asking for, is just, you do the right thing.
Thank you. Heather Wallace? I know I saw her a minute, a few minutes ago.
I'm good tonight, it's, it's, um, it's Lincoln, that's my apartment.
Okay. Lawrence Newman. I know I saw him too.
Good evening. I'm here again to speak about the necessity for effective Holocaust education in the Manatee County schools. Because although there is some education on the Holocaust in the schools, it's not very effective, and very many of the schools don't have any at all. I call your attention to an article which was being distributed, was published within the last month, and that's bringing to the forefront the failure of Florida schools as a whole to meet their obligations under the statute to effectively teach Holocaust education. It was highlighted in Palm Beach County because of a principle there, but that's really endemic of what we see across the state and what we see here in Manatee County. Manatee County has the opportunity to become a leader in its responsibilities to teach Holocaust education. There are resources here, which we've handed out, which are available to immediately implement full, effective, complete, and comprehensive Holocaust education, as called by the statute. What we often see is a fallback position, a default position. We're going to teach the Diary of Anne Frank. We've seen it teaching, talking to administrators, we've seen it talking with teachers. That's the one they'll choose. Why? Because it's safe, and it's simple. Is it based on the Holocaust? Yes. But what's it a story of? It's a story of a family that has to live in an attic for four years with the backdrop of the Holocaust. It doesn't teach about the Holocaust, it is mandated by the statute. The statute begins, all Florida schools are supposed to teach, quote, "The history of the Holocaust, 1933 to 1945, the systemic planned annihilation of European Jews and other groups by Nazi Germany." That's the obligation. I also call your attention to an effort now in Congress to create funding for a Holocaust Education Assistance Program Fund, and would cover training for educators, textbooks, and other educational materials that present historically accurate information about the atrocities of the Holocaust. And the Manatee County schools are falling far short of teaching the students these things that it must do about the Holocaust in order to create in those students the other parts of the statutes and how to be a responsible and respective, respectful person protecting democratic values and institutions. That must be taught within the context of this horrible occurrence in the history of the world that is mandated to be taught in the Florida schools, and particularly in Manatee County. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. For public comment? I don't have your name. And I don't have your name either. Do you have them over there? Do you have them? I don't have them on my list. What say ye, board lawyer?
Well, Ms. Messenger, it's acquired by the board policies that a person who wishes to speak sign up first. If there was a problem with the system, I think you can take that into account.
Right, and I can't, I know that I've had people say before that they had a problem. I don't know, I've actually never used that computer system out there.
We have this Mendel signed up. She chose Section 5A1, public hearing for the student progression plan.
But I, I didn't.
Which she spoke at. That's the only time I have.
I'm, I'm just kind of inclined to allow people to speak if they wanna speak on it. If, if the rest of the board is okay with that, if there's three people that say that they signed up and that the computer's not seeing it, I'm kind of inclined to allow that. Is everyone else okay with that?
Are you presiding?
I suppose if the public comment is still open.
I move that we extend public comment to everybody.
Yes, to those two people. And Vice Chair, first suggestion moving forward, as the legislature does in their committees, there's also a paper form, so that if you hear something, or you hear another speaker and you wanna speak, you fill out the form and you hand it to the clerk, and then you get put on the list. So that would mitigate any systems problems, and it would fulfill the board's policy.
I think our policy typically requires prior to the meeting beginning. But I, I'm, I know that you guys were here, you camp out here, and you pretty much are moving in. So, um...
I guess my motion dies for lack of a second, because I did make a motion and...
It's her call.
It's her call.
No, I support it.
Yeah, I think we did too.
Yeah. I'm, I was looking for a consensus.
You got it.
Got it.
You have it then.
Um, then, Mr. Salazar, would you like to come up?
I can go first, or is it she asked first, or?
Come on down, Bridget. Please, spell your name for the record when you come on up, although I think we all know it.
Bridget Mendel, B-R-I-D-G-E-T-M-E-N-D-E-L. Um, I'm talk, I was hoping to get an opportunity to speak twice on the progression plan. We normally have public comment first, and then the public hearing, and I noticed the agenda was switched, so I only had one opportunity to speak, which I thought was a little odd. But anyway, um, one of the things we didn't get to bring up was the fact that you are pulling PE from any student who requires remediation. And you're using their PE time to remediate that child. It is in the student progression plan. These are our most vulnerable children who need the opportunity to move, to run. Yeah, that is the multisensory experience that we are not providing those children based on the student progression plan. Uh, number two, uh, there was a comment that came up from a, um, uh, regarding the, the thing, um, about Orton Gillingham training only being offered in Georgia. I personally was trained at Orton Gillingham less than a month ago, right up Bradenton Christian School. I spent eight hundred dollars of my own money to train myself, because I am a highly trained, skilled reading specialist. And I wanted to add to my portfolio of skills, because you are not meeting the needs of children with dyslexia and language-based learning disabilities. Uh, LLI, Fountis and Pennell, same thing. Distar, uh, direct instruction, not appropriate. Orton Gillingham is, and you don't have to go to Georgia to get it. You also don't have to go to the other coast to get Wilson. Now, uh, last thing, I cannot tell you the number of assistant principals at Lakewood Ranch High School. There's two in particular, I will not mention their name, but every single year we have children at Lakewood Ranch High School, like that child back there, her child. Uh, there's a senior who was in honors classes, who is currently put in intensive reading, was told he can't get out, that his mother can't sign the waiver, only the assistant principal can. Every year, the assistant principals at Lakewood Ranch close ranks. And we interviewed Mr. Dollquest, and at his community interview, I stood up with the mic and I said, "I need to know if you are willing to honor the waiver." That, that should be done every year, that is not. And it starts at the top with, with the principal, the old one, and then all, everybody else closed ranks. He said, "I was at Buffalo Creek Middle School, I always honored that. And I know it's a parent's right to be able to refuse intensive instruction." There's a senior that's currently being, and is being kept from a Spanish II class, and is a college-bound senior, okay? There's also his sister, who is a sophomore, who is in honors classes, who because she opted out and doesn't have an FSA score, again, the, another assistant principal said, "Only I can sign it," or "Only the principal can." It is lying. They go into Lakewood and they say, "It doesn't exist, there's no such waiver. Only administrators, we choose, not you parents." It, every single year, it's got to stop. Um, trying to think, there was one more thing. Uh, the assistant principals, um, I, 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 I just don't know what else to do. These are college-bound children that, that you are retaining in, in these ridiculous...
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Salazar, come on down. After Salazar, um, Jessica Patterson.
Good evening. So I wanna start off with a question that was brought to my attention that still has not been answered. And you probably won't answer it, but I'm still gonna ask it, and I'll let you think it over while I do the rest of my speaking. Why did you disable the registrar's system and only enable it three days before school started? Think about it. Don't work your brain too hard, but think about it. All right? So as a representative of the Latino community, my daughter attends this school district. I graduated and grew up in this school district. It's a shame that we've come to this. I have parents who are concerned, who have come to me crying because they're unsure of what their child is going to expect when they go to school. It's enough that we have mass shootings in schools. But now we also have to deal with people who can't even clear their head enough to say, "Let's do what's right for the kids, what's right for the community." So take a step back. If you're not a parent at this point in your lifetime, because I'm not sure where each of you stand personally with kids. But if you're not a parent, take a step back and think about what you would do if your child was in this school district. What you would do if your child attended Lincoln Memorial Academy. How you would like to see that school ran. Do I want it ran by the school district, the school board, who had voted to give it the name Lincoln Memorial Academy, but now wants to take it back? So instead of throwing lies at the newspaper, who we know only supports those of the current establishment, the good old boy system, you've seen, I'm sure, in the newspaper lately, all the mess that they've done through my name and my personal life, but they only do it because I go against the establishment. Because I'm not a part of the good old boy system. Because I serve the people. Because I serve a higher power that apparently some of you have forgotten about.
Okay, it's his time to talk.
So where did we get lost? Where did we all get lost? Because the same school district that I graduated from, and I graduated from Lakewood Ranch High School, predominantly white school, where I felt as an outcast, where I felt like I wasn't wanted. But you know what? It made me who I am today, and it allows me to see things from a different perspective. You guys sit here on a stand and dictate, and dictate, and dictate, but you don't think.
Thank you.
Do some more thinking.
Jessica Patterson, come on down.
Jessica Patterson, J-E-S-S-I-C-A-P-A-T-T-E-R-S-O-N. Um, I just wanted to say thank you, Charlie, for bringing up the first motion with this student progression plan. It's been very stressful for us, for our kids in the system. Thank you, Gina, for doing the second motion and for bringing up, um, and thank you for the rest of the board, for all, for the unanimous decision, we really appreciate it. Um, there's just a few things that bother me, and I just, I'm, I'm very bothered that you should know that, that should not, never have been put up with no red strikes through it. We should have been able to see how the plan changed. And we, we feel duped. I, I, I don't feel like it was a mistake, the first, very first plan that went up. Um, there was all these kind of changes. That was not a plan from the previous year that just went up by mistake. That was a plan that had all these horrible, horrible changes that were put in it, and you had just hoped that we wouldn't catch on or see. But you should know better with Bridget Mendel. Um, so I just, we need, as a board, to make sure we're all reading the student progression plan, we're reading the agenda, we are making sure you guys all are her boss. Is that correct? Okay? So you, we're coming forward too, but we need all of you to be making sure that you're doing your job, because we are the voters that voted you in. And this is what we expect of you, to make sure that she is doing and the rest of the district is doing the correct things, and not trying to dupe us, which is what we feel. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, that concludes public comment. And with that, if you would allow, there were a couple of questions that did get brought up that our policy says we are not gonna address it while, during public comment section, but I'd really like to address a couple of things that were brought up, if you would allow.
Yeah, my...
Unless you would like to do it. Um, there was a couple of questions that were brought up. Um, one in relation to the minutes. The minutes are attached to the agenda one week prior to the board meeting and are available for anyone to see. Um, and it is my understanding that an email was sent, I guess, stating that. So, um, and the other thing that was, um, kinda mentioned, and I just wanted to share with the community, um, a memo that the board received. Um, and it really goes back to staffing concerns. Um, and this was just in regards to staffing, and some of the information that we received was that there was a staffing plan that was put in place for the nineteen-twenty school year, and that is aligned with LMA's budget. Um, all positions are currently filled with employees hired prior by LMA administration except for the principal and assistant principal, which are temporary. Um, if an employee did not have credentials to remain in their position, the district offered them an open position if they wanted employment. And some prior employees did not hold certification, therefore they could not remain as teachers. Um, and finally, finally, I, I just wanna share the information that the board got. I just wanna share information, that, that seems like that was a desire. I'm just trying to be as communicative as possible and share the information we were given. Final point about LMA staffing. All current teachers are certified except for four vacancies. And three of the positions are posted, and the remaining one will be posted. That was, that was the information shared with the board, and I wanted to make sure that that was also shared with the community, since there were staffing concerns. And with that, I will turn it over to the chair. I am, I am sitting that that is a memo that we received. I'm gonna answer one other question that was brought up about We Manatee. Somebody asked who was Me, We Manatee? We Man... I'm sorry?
Norm asked.
Oh, Mr. Nelson. I, I'm not trying to name specific people, I'm just trying to address the questions. I just wanna make sure that, uh, things are cleared and the air is cleared. Um, someone asked who We Manatee stands for? We Manatee is we are the school district of Manatee County. Uh, that would encompass everyone, my friend, including you. And that is all.
Page four.
Can you answer some of the black people questions? About Darlene Proo?
Rodney, come on.
Can we add, can we add some of the black people?
I am, I am not going to respond to anything, I just wanted to share information that I had. You had your time for public comment, I'm just responding back.
No, no, I say, may I respond to the email that was sent that I asked for the minutes? I could not open it because I did not have a portal ID. You clicked on the minutes and it dropped down and said, "Enter your portal ID." I don't have one because I'm a citizen, so they're not an employee.
When Ms. Lambert was made aware of that, is, that is when Ms. Lambert forwarded to her a copy of the draft minutes, which she was sent at twelve fifty-two today.
Twelve minutes today?
Okay, I just wanted to be, share as much information as I possibly can. Let's move on, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, I'm gonna correct that. The, the email was actually timed at twelve fifty-one today that was sent, uh, yeah, by Linda Lambert. Okay. Thank you. Um, with, with the agenda, thank you. Uh, okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Um, does Superintendent have a recommendation concerning approval of minutes?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the minutes from July twenty-third workshop and regular meeting and public hearing, July thirtieth, twenty nineteen, special public hearing for approval of the tentative budget and millage.
Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Been moved by Board Member Kennedy, is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Board Member Hope. Uh, is there discussion? Chair hearing none, the chair will call the question. All those in favor of approving the Superintendent's recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, indicate by saying nay. Uh, this, uh, motion is approved five zero. Um, the next item is consent agenda. Does the Superintendent have a recommendation concerning this, uh, consent agenda?
Yes, I recommend approval of the consent agenda for August thirteen, twenty nineteen.
Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Been moved by Board Member Kennedy, is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Vice Chair Messenger. To approve the Superintendent's recommendation to approve the consent, uh, agenda, and it has been seconded, um, it moved. Uh, all those in favor, please, discussion. I'd say, public comment, okay.
You said it was Dexter? McDonald?
Dexter McDonald.
Did you sign up for a consent agenda?
Oh.
Uh, I signed up, but actually I can figure out who made it.
That, this is now a very specific item, so if it's not to that, I apologize. Like I said, we received your documents, so I appreciate it. Okay.
Okay, that's, no public comment? The, uh, okay, uh, discussion. Is there any discussion concerning, uh, the, the motion to approve the Superintendent's recommendation to approve the consent agenda? Chair hearing none, the chair called the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, indicate nay. It is approved, uh, five zero, thank you very much. The, um, there are no new business, uh, items pulled from the agenda that I'm aware of. And, um, the next, well, I think we do not have... Okay.
We're on, uh, workshop item request.
Okay, yeah, okay, workshop. Are there any workshop item requests? I, I think we've had discussion earlier that, uh, we would workshop, uh, talking about, um, amendments, you know, to our policies and procedures. Am I right about that?
SPP.
What?
The student progression.
Student progression plan. Okay, uh, chair recognizes Vice Chair Messenger.
Um, in light of what Reverend McDonald gave us, um, and I, I know we really couldn't discuss it really tonight, but I'm requesting that we have a workshop to really talk about, um, the future, um, how we're gonna form the board, um, you know, use that piece, um, and have a conversation about that, and, and any other way that we might see fit, um, to move forward so that there is not fear, that there is comfort and understanding of what we're going to do moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, Board Member Hope?
Yeah, just, the only problem with that is now that the decision's been appealed, it's going to an administrative hearing.
Okay.
And what I was gonna say in my comments is that many of the things that, that I spoke about, Reverend Golden spoke about, I, you know, we talked about, but because there's been a request for an administrative hearing, that has to run its course.
Okay.
Uh, and, and that's unfortunate.
Right.
Because I think we were ready as a board to move forward with that discussion and, and, and seating a community board, but because it is now going through an administrative hearing, which will be either here or heard in Sarasota, I think, the week of the twenty-sixth, or in Manatee County, we have to wait till the final order comes out from the administrative law judge.
Can I address that real quick?
Okay. Okay, more? Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna recognize Board Member Kennedy and then Board Member Golden.
Thank you. Okay? Um, I was just gonna say, I don't think, because the, we, the board, during that July twenty-third, I think we were unanimous that we wanted to make sure that LMA had an independent board. So my, my take would be that regardless of the outcome of the hearing, um, that we still, I think, could start that discussion about how we are part of that formation, or the community forms that board, that's, that's my...
Have you finished?
No, trust me.
I'm done. I'm done, I'm done.
Okay, I, I'm sorry. This is not a time, you know, for, you know, the audience to be speaking up like that. I am asking you to refrain from that or you to leave. Thank you. Okay, yeah. Okay, the Chair recognizes Board Member Golden.
Mr. Chair, first off, the vote that we took, the official vote that we took, was a four-to-one vote with respect to taking operational control of the school the very next day. Within that timeframe, there were, there was, according to the statute, a ten-day period in which the board that we supplanted would have an opportunity to appeal our decision. I would not want to have us complicate that process anymore than has already been complicated by all of the innuendo, all of the things that have been said. The statute also very clearly says that there will be a decision made within sixty days. That's what has to happen. And the recommendation that I'm hoping that we can agree to is to allow the process for the protection of the rights of the board that we supplanted to be exercised. They have appealed, it will be heard, it will be decided within sixty days. The other problem that we have as a board operationally is that we are supplanting a board that came to the end of the fiscal year with nearly a million-dollar deficit. And that is not something that you overcome overnight. And what I'm asking and what I have already addressed with the, so I guess this is as good a time as ever to get it out. I have asked the Superintendent if we can coincide our efforts to continue the progress of Lincoln Middle. I'm, I, I cannot state it strongly enough. The Lincoln Memorial Academy exists in law and in fact. There were four hundred and sixty-three children that showed up there Monday, and all of their teachers. So I'm, I'm not put off or persuaded or intimidated by all of the innuendo and all of the negativity and all of the disinformation that is distributed. I, I want to deal in facts. And in fact, sixty days from now, we will have a choice to make. How we are going to restore the continuation of the mission of that school into the hands of a board other than ourselves. And I, I just don't want us to, we keep going over this, and people keep coming down here and they keep making statements. I am just absolutely committed to allowing the pri- I've made a decision, four of us joined in it, and I'm waiting to hear the outcome. It's either right or wrong. And at the time that I made the decision, and I said it again, and I'll say it publicly, I was not in favor of taking control and administration of this school and putting it in the hands of the state of Florida, where I know that the Commission of Education would have turned it over to a management company. I was born at night, it just wasn't last night. I know that that was what was on the horizon. I know that we would be held up to ridicule and scorn far beyond the corners of this, of this county. So I think that, that, we made the best decision that we could have made at the time. Whether it's right for the ages, we're going to find that out within sixty days, because there's no doubt in my mind that the school was not properly governed. Not properly governed.
Please sit down, sir. And you're going to have to restrain yourself or leave.
It's not properly, I, I, I usually have a pretty good command of the words that I'm using. And I say "the" school was not properly governed, that has a meaning, because there's a governing body over that school, and the governing body is not the community. The governing body is the Board of Directors that only met four times last year, and that in fact was not responsible for making any of the decisions that needed to be made up until the night of the twenty-third, when this board did what it had to do. Nobody up here wants to be the board for Lincoln Memorial. Now, what I hope is that by the time these sixty days are up, that there will be enough folk out there who are willing to put not only, not only their volunteer service and their volunteer time, but their money where their mouth is, because that's what it's going to take. That's why they are in the trouble that they are in. They did not, they never have had enough money, and they did not, nor did they know how to get out of that situation. They didn't. Now, you know what? You, you know what? Mr. Chairman?
I'm, I'm going to leave.
Okay.
But you're allowing him to dress the audience. You are allowing that to happen.
He's a board member, and you are allowed to leave right now and escort if you don't sit down. Okay, please escort this man out. Okay, leave.
One of the. I'm not having. And it's fine. Officers? I would like the opportunity to finish my remarks.
Mr. Chairman, before, before Reverend Golden continues, I want to caution the board about revisiting the decision you made on the twenty-third.
Thank you.
Because that is under review. It is subject to litigation. I do think it would be an appropriate topic to talk about the future of Lincoln. The structure, the governance, who's in charge, who's not in charge, those kinds of things at the appropriate time. I do think the discussion regarding the decision of the board on the twenty-third should be set in amber until the completion of those proceedings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if I could just finish, because I am really, really, there's just so much that's being said that's just not right. The future, the future of Lincoln Memorial Academy is not, in my mind, and I don't propose to speak for anybody else up here, is not linked to the fortunes of the former principal of that school. Lincoln, in my mind, is bigger than that. It's better than that. And it is already proven that as of yesterday, when thirty-one more kids were there on the opening of the school yesterday than there were last year. So in spite of all of the, the hype and all, that's just, those are just numbers, your count noses. And I understand, you know what? I didn't just get to be black yesterday, I've been black all my life. And I know, but, Mr. Chair, I can defend myself, and I don't have to defend myself to my people who are sincere. They are sincere. They're just sincerely wrong, and only time is going to take care of that. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I was only asking for a workshop.
I understand, and the only question that we're trying to address is when that should happen. And I think it should happen after these sixty days.
Are there any other thoughts about a workshop? Chair hearing none, we'll move on. Okay, legal update.
None for me, Mr. Chairman.
Instructional update.
There are many activities going on within the school district. We've had an opening the last two days that were phenomenal. We had a debrief with.
Excuse me, there's a couple ladies out there who do not want to be part of this meeting, and can you ask them to leave now or else escort them out? We're not going to have that kind of chatter going on, do you understand? So, officers, will you escort these ladies out, please? I'm talking about these two ladies right here in kind of the third row. Lady in blue dress, and, okay, those three there, they want to chat during, this is a business meeting, it's not something to be chatting about. Okay, ladies? I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, will you escort these two ladies out? Yeah, those two ladies. Ladies, if you don't leave, you're going to be arrested, so why don't you leave? Deputy Superintendent, please resume.
As we focus upon instructional services within Manatee County, we've gotten off to a positive start as we opened the nineteen, at the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. I personally visited Hale Middle School yesterday, where they had a positive storm. They are the storm at Hale Middle School, and students arrived in a very orderly fashion. They have four hundred students less than they did last year. During a debrief yesterday afternoon with the Superintendent, each representative of the district that visited school sites was able to report out on the positive as well as some issues that may need to be addressed for improvement at the sites. The instructional side of the house, as well as operational side of the house, took notes, and we are certainly addressing some of the concerns that were surfaced, but overall, it was a very positive day yesterday and today within Manatee County schools.
Thank you very much. Okay, operation update. Deputy Superintendent Wagner.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I want to just, first, I have a few items. Number one, transportation. So yesterday morning, we had our buses depart from the Matsky Center, and we covered a hundred and fifty-five different buses were, were running their routes. We transported almost fifteen thousand students. Our call center's been open since July twenty-second, providing avenues where parents can call and get, get information. We know there's a, it is a heavy call volume right now, so we appreciate people's patience. We're going to keep our call center open through the second week of school. We have our transportation staff is busy adjusting routes right now and filling in where we need backup drivers are needed. We've taken additional safety measures, which has added to the delays, so we are making adjustments, adjustments every day, and we appreciate everybody's patience as we do that. We're currently short twelve bus drivers right now as we enter the school year, so we're still having challenges with that, but we're way better off than where we were last year. Number two, human resources. We currently have twenty-three vacancies as of Sunday.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to interrupt your report, but I, I do have a question, because I can't find an answer to it anywhere. Is there a policy that we have for responding in a given time, within twenty-four hours or within twelve hours, to a complaint made about transportation?
It depends on the volume. So we have a call center with about nine people working in it. If we were to have a thousand questions or a thousand calls during the day, that would be a lot, and it might be hard to get back to them within the twenty-four-hour window. We are returning phone calls as they come in. We've had some technical issues with the phones. People have been on hold, and then it clicks off, and then they have to call back. But they are working very, very hard to answer all the questions. We know there's a lot of concerns out there, and our job is to transport the students safely and efficiently, and, and we're working out, working out the issues.
Do you prioritize them in terms of safety first? I want to address this because I got kids walking through a construction site. How do we, how do we prioritize, instead of all of us just getting all of the emails and then having to figure out for ourselves, well, this is really important, this is not?
Absolutely. Well, safety is top priority, of course, for us, and so we do look at those. You know, we are challenged by the number of new streets that have been put in. You know, there's lots of new roads, there's lots of maps that have to be updated, so what looks good on the map for a route, all of a sudden when you drive it, it might not look so good.
My last question is, is there a message? I mean, what, when I call, and I have my kid that's standing on the side, is there a message that says, "Thank you for calling due to high volume, we're trying to deal, we will try to get back with you"? How does, how, how, how is the parent received officially?
Well, and sometimes it depends on the time. So if you were to call in the, you know, afternoon when the buses are not running, yeah, there's, there's not a heavy call volume compared to where they are in the morning, where they're saying, "My bus is late." Okay, so there's a lot of calls happening then. There's a lot of calls in the afternoon where they're happening that a bus may be late, and it has been late this week, these last two days. So we know that, but we have made adjustments every single day. We are adjusting the routes, we're making sure that safety is first, we're listening to the community. Fifteen thousand students is a lot to transport, and so this is day two, and the feedback we've had from the schools today is that today was better than yesterday, and we're going to continue to make it better every single day. But we are committed to transporting those students, so. And if the call center needs to go past two more weeks, then we can surely run it past two more weeks as well. You know, our job is to make sure parents have the information.
Can't get any more people on the call center right now.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and as we balance routes, you know, the job is to make sure the parents know that their pickup route has changed, and then the time has changed. Human resources vacancies. So as of Sunday, we have twenty-three teaching vacancies. Just today, we signed a contract with the University of South Florida Sarasota, where we have twelve interns received advanced contracts. So that's a big deal. So there'll be a level-three interns, they'll start late in November and December. Once their degree is confirmed in January, then they'll be hired into a permanent position. So that's something that's new, first time. Congratulations to the Personnel Department for making that a reality, and others up here helped with that as well from the board. The IT, you know, IT deployed seven thousand computers this summer, opened three new schools, Raptor upgraded at all schools. The employee handbook was distributed electronically via WebNet, which is the first time that's ever happened here in our school system. We upgraded the telecommunications upgrade, which will save the district about three hundred thousand dollars a year. Food and nutrition, this summer we served, and we've talked about it before, so this summer we served two hundred and thirteen thousand meals, free meals in the summer, breakfast and lunch, to students here in Manatee County. We had five hundred peoples attend the first annual Children's Wellness Fair. It was at Lincoln Park, and we want to thank United Way, the Food Bank of Manatee County, Rural Health, Manatee Health Department. We had many people attend that event, and it was really because of everyone coming out to support it. You know, we have almost four hundred staff that make up food and nutrition, and we currently have just twenty openings in food and nutrition, which is a very low number compared to where we were last year. And the last one, number five, work by maintenance and operation. Just some highlights, we re-roofed Blackburn, power-coated seventy window treatments at Palmetto High School to finish up their painting. Hale, we did a swine barn replacement. Bay Shore High School and Nolan Middle School, chiller and, and cooling tower replacement. Bay Shore Elementary, Lincoln Middle School, Nolan, interior and exterior painting. You know, our custodial staff has worked very hard all summer, truly, they truly have worked, they've done deep cleaning. The schools look great when you're out in the schools and you walk the, walk the halls. I mean, it looks great. We have three hundred and forty-eight custodians here in Manatee County. We currently have fifteen vacancies, which again is very low compared to where we were last few years, and we're going to continue to support our school system, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Superintendent Wagner. Okay, the. Superintendent Saunders.
Yes, well, I, I do want to welcome everyone back. We definitely had a, a great first day. One of the things that we've done here is we pair up an instructional, a district office person with an operational, and they're assigned as a liaison to every school. So they're, they're at the very beginning of the day and the end of the day, so that we have boots on the ground to come back and report the progress, and so that if we are having any concerns or issues, we can immediately find out, and we can address and do something about it. The great thing is, the- The great thing is, then we have people that immediately respond. We had a couple of, you know, air condition concerns immediately, and they were addressed immediately. We were able to find out, you know, routes or transportation issues immediately. So by doing that, we're able to see and hear and actually be a part of those beginning and ending of the first day. I went to three schools. I had Parish Community High, I had Mills Elementary, and also had Braden River Middle School. The wonderful thing about having the three new schools open is not only did it alleviate crowding and have new buildings for rezone for those students, but going to Mills Elementary now, it looks like a normal elementary school. It is not small by any means. It's around 900 students, but that change with opening up Barbara Harvey Elementary really did fix that situation. So by managing our zone and doing some different things this next year that we're looking at, I think we are going to be able to get a handle on some of the overcrowded situations and help right-size the schools so that if we need a wing, we're putting it strategically, and we can invest our facility money in our existing schools over the next few years. I know it wasn't mentioned about having a workshop on our facilities, because we will talk about that in our Capitol Workshop, but that will be something we will bring forward in September for a workshop so that we can look at redesigning that next five-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Saunders. Okay, Board Member Golden.
Comments?
Oh.
We're called, Board, we're at Board Comments now.
Yes. Forgive me, but I cannot remember whether this came through the Florida School Board Association or whether it came through your letter. But there is a certification that's available for educators who take a certain number of hours of Saturday courses for adverse childhood experiences.
Social emotional learning?
Social emotional learning. Did that come through you?
We, we, it's everywhere right now. It's in legislation as well as information I'm providing.
Right. But this, this, this is a course of study that provides a certification. And what I'd like to ask is if we can make sure that that knowledge is made available to all of our teachers so that as many as can take advantage of it can do that. It's great to pass our pamphlets and send literature, but, but this is a course of study. And I, I think it's on the Florida State University.
Yeah, it is.
Is it Florida State?
I'm looking at the email right now.
Well, then help me, man. You know I don't know how to do that.
I had to find, I just found it now.
You know I don't know how to use that magic box?
I saved it too.
Do it.
So as soon as you said it, I, the email came to us, well, it came to me, and it's a, it's a bulk email.
Yes.
It came on Wednesday last week, the 7th, at 10:55 a.m. It's from Karen Oehm, O-E-H-M-E, and the course is Professional Certification in Trauma and Resilience. It's an online course offered by Florida State University.
So I had it all right.
You did.
I didn't have a paper. Okay. So, and don't they offer, don't they say they offer, they...
Professional Development Credit?
Yes, that's, that's the point that I'm trying to make. Is that something that's helpful or...
It is. We, we offer courses as well, because it is mandated in statute that all of our employees have to have a certain number of hours. That's just an additional avenue that one can take instead of going through our own district training, et cetera.
Okay. I, I don't, it's not that I don't trust what we do here locally, but if they've developed...
My attention too.
Yeah, I'd really like to ask that that be distributed and disseminated. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Golden. Board Member Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I just, I just want to reiterate for the public, and I realize some of the folks aren't here, that, that, that I continue to be committed that Lincoln continue, as a charter school, with a community board that receives training in the responsibilities of a board, and to continue that mission and vision. And I, and I do believe that, that that's where we will arrive. And the other important point that I want to make is the facts surrounding the decision will come out in the administrative hearing. There will be a formal hearing, and an administrative law judge, who happens to be, I think, the chief judge of the administrative at DOA, will be hearing the case and issuing a, a final order, which will lay everything out. And I, I just ask the community to, to stand by. We're spending an enormous amount of time because we have people that want to, to argue a decision that was already been made. That decision is, has been challenged. An administrative law judge will hear that case, will weigh the evidence, and it, it doesn't serve the board nor the community well for us to hear from community members the same thing each board meeting. It's exhausting, it's disruptive, and allow the process to run its course. There is a finite date. 60 days from the date the, the, the request was made appealing our decision. 60 days from that date, we will have a, no later than 60 days from that date, we will have a final order which will give us guidance so that this board can meet again and do our job. I remain committed to the mission and the vision of Lincoln Memorial Academy, but it will have to be operated by a community board that understands its fiduciary responsibilities. You can't operate a school if you don't have money. And one of the facts that came out is they did not have the money to make their July payroll. They had already spent what we had given them to...
Mr. Chair, I really think we should stay away from that. Yeah, let's, let's not do what we say we're not, don't, we wanna do. Okay?
So at any rate, in addition to that, in addition to that, we've heard a number of times about the obligations of the district around education of the Holocaust. And I really don't want to keep hearing what we are or are not doing. I would like to know. I am committed to ensuring that we offer the best possible education around the, the history of those events so that our children can learn from them. It's not just about the Jewish population. It's, it's about a number of diverse populations during that time period who suffered, families that were destroyed. It wasn't just Jews. It was a number of minority populations, the disabled. And, and we do need to ensure that we comply with that law. And I've heard this since I got on the board, and I really don't want to continue to have that conversation. I really want us to address it, and I want us to have the leading curriculum to teach that portion of human history and, and, and all of, and all the facts that, that, that need to be shared. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hope. Okay, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. I just want to, very short and sweet, say thank you to the administrators and the teachers and staff who were very welcoming to me yesterday at the schools that I just popped in on kind of unexpectedly. I was just kind of driving around town, and wherever the lime squeeze took me, that's where the school I went to. So it was a really positive day. It's just always great to get kids back on campus and get refocused on why we do what we do. So I'll be at more later this week, so now that we've fine-tuned our school board policy, so I, I may show up at a district school, and if I see something, I shall report to the superintendent. All right, that's it. Have a, have a great school year, everybody.
Okay. So thank you, Board Member Kennedy, and you know what you should do. Okay. All right.
I'm gonna do it, but I'm not...
Okay, Vice Chair Messenger.
A lot of agreement with what Mr. Kennedy just said, and thank you to everyone and making it through the first day, and that's always really difficult. And I made it through my first day with my VP K-er, and only shed one tear. She shed no tears and was so excited when I picked her up that she was like, "I get to go back tomorrow." So I think it worked out well, and that is it.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Messenger. I, I think that our opening went very well. I had the privilege of visiting half a dozen schools, had a little breakfast here and there, and I, I was very impressed with the conditions of our schools and the reception, the kindness of all the staff, and we are on top of it. I salute the superintendent and her staff of, you know, getting things ready. I mean, this is a massive operation, and it was done very, very well. There's kudos go out to a lot of folks. I want to thank the assistance, you know, tonight, of, you know, the city of Bradenton, and there was concerns about this meeting, and I think everything, their presence here did a lot to, you know, help this be a successful meeting. So thank you all. Thank the chiefs, Captain Fleming, and, and helped to bring, bring this about. We have a lot to be proud of in this district, and we're moving forward. Not everybody has the perception that we have about the district, but I'm very proud of what we are doing. So with that being said, I'm going to close out the meeting and wish everybody a happy evening. Thank you.